March 27, 2012, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukian, Najarian.
Yes.
Centaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. Can we hear your report, please?
Certainly. The agenda for the March 27, 2012 special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, March 22, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The items before you, you have two. The first one is Director of Public Works regarding City of Glendale Draft Bicycle Transportation Plan, January 2012. One is motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you. Mr. Churchill?
Yes, we'll have Mr. Zern and his team come up and present this very comprehensive program regarding bicycle transportation.
Madam Mayor, members of the councils.
And let me just tell the members of the public that are here, I have three cards. If you plan to speak on this item, please turn in your cards. Thank you. Mr. Zern.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, our intent this afternoon is to bring you, as an informational item, the progress we've made to date on our bicycle transportation plan. We have it in what I'll call final draft form, getting ready to make any final comments and changes, or incorporate any final comments and changes, and bring it back to you for formal review and action. Again, this is for information. We thought this is such a comprehensive document, has a lot of different issues involved in it, we wanted to bring it to you ahead of time, before we brought it to you in a formal council meeting for a vote. So, we're not looking for a vote today. In fact, you have a motion that originally indicated it was adoption of the plan, but we've, we have a replacement motion for that. It is simply gathering information and feedback from you, letting us go over the highlights of the plan, hearing the public outreach we've done with homeowners groups and other interested parties, and then, like I said, most importantly, getting back from you, comments, concerns, and recommendations that we can then incorporate into the plan and bring back for formal adoption. So that's, that sets the tone. We've got Mr. Bagnanian and our consultant Ryan Snyder here to give you the presentation. We're going to try to move through this as quickly as possible. We know you have a long day ahead of you, so if there's any other questions, I'll get the ball rolling here and get this started. So, Mr. Bagnanian will be first with his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, essentially, the plan has been in the development for almost a year, and we've been very actively working with the members of the community, especially with our bicycle advisory committee that was set up to provide input throughout the process of development of the bicycle transportation plan. The bicycle advisory committee consisted of members of the Transportation Parking Commission, Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission. We had bicycle advocates, avid bicyclists that were members, bicycle club representatives that participated, and we had members of the Glendale Unified School District and the Glendale Community College that participated in the advisory committee. We've had also a number of public outreach meetings to develop the plan, to get input from the community. We've had the plan on the city's website to also present it to anybody who's interested to look at the plan, and we've been getting a lot of emails and input throughout the process of the development of the plan. We anticipated after today, receiving council comments and direction on the plan, to come back to you with a final draft of Mr. Zern's mentioned in May, which happens to be the Bicycle Month, National Bicycle Month, so we will be presenting it to council for adoption of the plan. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Ryan Snyder, who's our consultant, who was the key in preparing the bicycle transportation plan. After that, I would like to invite our chairperson of the Transportation Parking Commission, because we presented the draft plan to the commission to receive their input, and I will have a, just a short presentation, a couple of slides, on the funding and implementation schedule of the plan. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Just provide a brief overview of what we've got here. We have a short presentation. As Mr. Bagnanian said, we've gone through an extensive public outreach effort with the committee that we had, as well as several public outreach meetings and several ad hoc meetings with various groups, so the issue has been pretty well studied. What we'll talk about today is primarily the planned projects. The plan itself has these eight chapters that deal with everything from introduction, why we're doing it, to public outreach that we did, the existing conditions, and goals, and policies, as well as funding, implementation, and design guidelines. We worked very extensively with the different types of bikeways. First of all, we have what are called Class 1 bikeways, or essentially bike paths that are exclusive rights of way, like along the Los Angeles River. We also have bike lanes, which are striped lanes, like along Glen Oaks, that we planned, and we also planned some what are called Class 3, just signed routes. Again, you're familiar with these, I think, in the city. And when we go out and look at what's there, and we classify them this way, you already have some bikeways in the city, but not a real extensive network as we're proposing here. There you can see the whole network in the city, and then breaking it down by the north and south and so forth, it's eas- little easier to see the routes. But we looked at what was out there. We spent a lot of time in the field, measuring the curb-to-curb widths of streets, looking at rights of way, exclusive rights of way, to determine what type of bikeway would be appropriate on which street. We wanted to create a network that served the entire city, that served important destinations like Civic Center, Downtown, Community College, the Transit Center, and many others. We wanted a network that would link up with the neighboring jurisdictions' networks. We also wanted to create a network that served different types of users. There are different types of cyclists out there. Your real experienced cyclists will ride on the busiest streets, whether it's a bikeway or not, but then we've got the, we're modest cyclists who really need some sort of designated bikeway, or even a bike path, in some cases. So we tried to provide something for everyone, so we're reaching all types of bicyclists. And when we go out in the field and we see what's there with the street, what will fit? We'll look to see if bike lanes will fit. If they do, great, we can plan bike lanes there. If they don't, we might plan on a Class 3, just a signed route, or in some cases, we looked for other treatments, special shareo types, which we'll talk about momentarily, or in some cases, even road diets. We tried to establish, in the north town, north, the north-south link is probably the most challenging, because of the limitations there with, with road width and the traffic that goes north-south, but we do have several options in that area. And the southern part of town, the main part of town, as you can see, we've got an entire network proposed here of the different types of bikeways. Again, each selected based on what makes sense for what's there now. Altogether, the bicycle plan proposes about 14 miles of bicycle paths, 19 miles of bicycle lanes, and about 66 miles of signed routes. We also have three miles of improved streets that have no official bikeway designation, but are just something that would make those streets better to ride on for cyclists. We are looking at other ways of enhancing bikeways. In recent years, we've seen some new devices come about that make bikeways more useful, and we'll show some photos of those soon here, but things like colored bike lanes, and buffered bike lanes, and shareos that are accentuated in different ways, like they're doing in Long Beach and some other places. So we have proposed some of those. We've also looked at some of the issues that would be needed, where we're proposing bikeway types that are not necessarily part of the standard manual and uniform traffic control devices. We would need to go through some council approval. We would need to go through an experimental process with the California Traffic Control Device Committee, as well as Federal Highway Administration, and we need to look at some of the issues of what it costs and what the implementation methods would be of putting some of these down, which we'll talk about again soon. We have a chapter on design guidelines that covers everything from regular bike lanes and bike, signed bikeways, to bike paths and signs, and even drainage grates and all sorts of things that affect the bicycling environment. And so here's where we're looking at colored, or buffered bike lanes. Colored bike lanes are now a standard device that we can use. We also have, in some cases, proposed buffered bike lanes, which are a bike lane that just has some painted area between the bike lane and the roadway, and in some cases, between the bike lane and the parking, just to give the cyclists a little more sort of safety We've also proposed what we're calling Type B shareos. I think some of you are familiar with their, with what they're doing in Long Beach, along Second Street, where they've painted a shareowed lane on top of the travel lane, to make the lane more visible, and so it is really just a shareo, but it's got this paint under it that sort of accentuates it, and makes it very clear to motorists and bicyclists that cyclists can be there, that they can take the center of the lane. And this is the type of thing that we would use on streets where it's important to have something a little more than just a shareo, on streets where bike lanes won't fit. And there's different types of shareos we're looking at also, what we're calling Type B shareos, that are something over and above the standard shareo, like this one they're using in Brookline, Massachusetts, where they've just put the lines on the side of it, and they place it very frequently. It makes the shareo route a very prominent, and again, notifies the cyclists where to ride, and notifies motorists to expect cyclists there. So it's much more sort of prominent type of shareo. The painting is something that your Public Works Department is looking at. We don't have an ideal solution for this yet. They've been using painted colored bike lanes in Europe for a long, long time successfully, so we're trying to figure out what the most ideal type of sort of coloring is for bike lanes. So your Public Works Department has looked at everything from hot tape that's been experimented with in the city of LA, which seems to work pretty well, but is costly, as well as standard paint that has issues with sticking and, and maintenance and sort of repainting, but less costly to put down. Standard traffic paint that can be used, like they're using in Long Beach is another option. And then, again, sort of looking at the maintenance issues of that. In Pasadena, around the Rose Bowl, they're using a slurry treatment, which is, seems to work pretty well. So, again, the city is exploring, if you're going to start using color either in your bike lanes or in shareowed lanes, you know, what is the, so the best way to do that? We have opened up the possibility, on a small number of streets, of having road diets. I think you're all familiar with the concept of road diet, as you're about to experiment with Honolulu, where we reduce the number of travel lanes in order to create space for bike lanes. We have a number of streets in here where we're proposing that as an option. Not decided yet. If the bike plan's passed, we're proposing really to have these go into what we're calling study corridors, so sort of the bigger decisions would be deferred until later on, but we have introduced the idea that there might be some places where road diet would make sense. And in every case where we have that, we've looked at the traffic volumes and believe that they can be accommodated without impact on, on capacity or traffic diversion. We're also looking at the possibility of what we call reverse angled parking. Perhaps this would be a treatment that could be used on Brand Boulevard. The advantage of reverse angled parking is when motorists pulling, pull out, if there's a bike lane in front of them, the motorists can see the bicyclists. We don't normally put bike lanes, or bikeways of any type, behind standard pull-in angled parking, because the motors pulling out can't see where they're going. So these are, reverse angled parking is something that a growing number of cities are starting to use, really safer for all users, because when they pull out into an active travel lane, it's safer for the motors to pull out into a lane they can see into, and also letting people out of the car doors, especially children. When they get out of the car door, they're going to get out on the street towards the sidewalk, and not come out and, and exit towards the, towards the active travel lane. So these are some, you know, a technique that we could use in a place like Brand to make a bike lane work there. We have these designated study corridors in that list, Brand, Honolulu, La Crosse, Verdugo, Concord, Chevy Chase, Verdugo-Wash, and San Fernando Railroad Path, as corridors that require more attention and more study. Particularly Brand Boulevard, we had, I would say, an enormous amount of interest in having some sort of bicycle treatment on Brand Boulevard. We had many people contact us and say that Brand is a very, very important street to get down. It connects to the Transit Center, it connects to destinations outside of Glendale, it's the main street, it connects to all the stores, and so there was a tremendous amount of interest in having something on Brand Boulevard, but there were no sort of easy treatments that arose. It's not really wide enough with, for standard bike lanes, especially with the pull-in angled parking. If you reverse, reverse the angled parking, and we might want to, we could probably fit bike lanes in. And so there, there are some possibilities, but we felt that Brand Boulevard is a significant enough corridor that, to study this would require the participation of merchants and property owners and other people, and, and the bike plan was probably not the right place to decide exactly what you do with Brand Boulevard. And so some of these others on here just require more attention, where we might use road diets. And then in places like Verdugo-Wash, we looked at the possibility of a bike path, most likely down the bottom of it. Treatment they're starting to use in a number of places now, but it does bring issues of, you know, making sure that people are safe in the wash and, and closing the wash off when rain events and so forth occur. San Fernando Railroad Bike Path was another study corridor. They are putting a bike path along the same railroad corridor in the city of Los Angeles further north, and in Burbank. So it would, though, require some cooperation with the railroad, so that is also designated as a study corridor. We created connections, some sort of real key, sort of north-south connections. We needed routes that cross the 210. We needed some routes that connected with Foothill and along Honolulu Avenue. We also wanted to connect with the Moncho Shopping District and create options for people to use some streets with a little bit less traffic on them. Again, probably the most challenging corridor in the city is getting that north-south connection there with Verdugo Road and Canyatta, and, and the Wash, and some others. So we've provided different options, and we're looking at a variety of ways of getting the bicyclists through there. There's a north-south connection that we needed to get people, quite a few people that do go recreationally riding up in the hills and over to Pasadena, to the Rose Bowl. Of course, we want to connect up with the college, and also connect up with the Ross Moon community, where quite a few people ride today. And then in western Glendale, connecting Sonora Avenue is really important. That actually has the highest bicycle counts in the city. And connecting a school route further north with Glenwood Stocker, connecting further east in the network was important as well. And then in the central part of town, we've got the Type B shareos on Broadway, which would be a real important east-west connection. We're linking with the Transit Center. We've got, of course, the Riverdale Maple Project, which has been a project in the city for a while as well. And then last, some projects, again, in the north-south, some options really. We looked at some of the things that are going on in Central with some of the widening, again, the study corridor on Brand. Orange is a possibility that can fit bike lanes. Chevy Chase in Glendale are other corridors that we're looking at as, with, for the potential of them. Last, the plan includes a variety of programs. The cities that have been most successful in really creating a bike culture and changing the way of life have both physical facilities in the way of bikeways, and parking, and links to transit, and all of these things, but they've got active programs. They have safety education, they've got promotional events, they've got the police department cooperating with enforcement events. They evaluate, they conduct councils, and some of these things are things that you're already doing in the city, but we do have described there the types of things that the city can seek funding for to really create a whole programmatic environment to support bicycling and change the way people, really to create a bike culture here. With that, I will pass it, pass it back? Okay?
My name is Peter Fuad. I'm chairman of the Transportation and Parking Commission. First of all, I confess I did not ride my bike here. I was a member of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and I attended some of the public outreach meetings, and I want to commend staff and Snyder and Associates. They did a very good job of public outreach, and when people had comments, they were very responsive to those comments. In terms of comments, both from the commission and from the public, probably the biggest one was safety. People want to feel safe riding their bikes. People want some clarity on how bikes, what their rights, what the right-of-way is on roads, these bikes versus automobiles. There are quite a few comments in that bicyclists themselves need to follow their rules, stop at stop signs, stop at stoplights, and so on. There are a number of comments on specific routes. People seem to have their favorites. My favorite is Orange Street, because that seems to be a good alternative for Central and Brand, and it's, it's not that heavily used street and has access to a lot of areas. And probably the thing that generated the most comments were the so-called road diets. People were concerned about, you know, its impact on traffic and so on. To my mind, the thing to keep in mind on road diets is, in reality, it's a very small part of the bicycle plan. It's, I mean, pick a number, it's 5%. And aside from Honolulu, the only time that road diets will be considered, such as on Brand and so on, they're subject to further study. You will have a, you will have more input that will be done, there will be more study done, and more outreach done with merchants and local residents and so on. So we didn't want the, the bike plan to be derailed or to be hindered by the fact that road diets are, can be controversial, but that's really a small part, and would be subject to further, further study. To me, the bike plan in many ways just sort of ratifies what's already happening out there. People are riding on the streets, particularly Sonora, Kenneth, and the area I'm familiar with, and other parts of the city. So in a way, this is sort of makes it safer for, for existing bicyclists to continue where they're going now, and to encourage more, more bicycling. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, lastly, I just want to quickly provide you input on how we can make this plan happen, the funding and implementation of the plan. Based on our estimates, again, these are only estimates, which is outlined for all the facilities in the bicycle transportation plan, our estimate is about $5.2 million for the bikeways, whether it's the striped bike lanes, whether it's the shareos, the signage that goes along with it over the entire plan. There's about $383,000 also estimated in bicycle racks and bicycle parking amenities. High-cost projects are, what was mentioned by Ryan Snyder, is the Verdugo-Wash, or the San Fernando Railroad Track parrelling that. That is a very expensive, it could be a regional, it may require a large portion of a grant-funded project that we will be seeking as we go forward, looking at the right-of-way that would maybe require for that. These costs does not include our essentially design or maintenance costs that we will be looking into as we develop these plans. And then we're also setting aside about $125,000 a year through safer-out-to-school grants that we have been receiving for education of bicyclists, whether at the school level, or safety education that we will provide. The next slide, basically, we prioritize all the routes or the facilities into three groups of short-range, medium-range, and long-range. These are also based on, the short-range is based on the input we got from the community, from the Bicycle Advisory Committee, on what routes were more important than others. We will be working on this on an annual basis, developing it as part of our capital improvement program, and as we're resurfacing street, or slurry seating street, we will be looking at the bicycle transportation plan. We will be implementing those facilities based on the capital improvement program. And we will be developing it as we go forward. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but this is what was prioritized in the plan. We will be updating that on an annual basis as well. What is most important here is also the funding that we have allocated. Right now, in the current fiscal year, we have about $233,000 for the, that, that we will be spending on the bicycle transportation plan. And then we have also, these two figures are very important, and one is the Glendale-Narrows Riverwalk, Riverwalk Bridge. We've been able to secure grants through the Metro Regional Measure R funds, that would approximately $400,000 for now, that is on the Metro-approved list of projects that can be used for the design of the future bridge on the, over the LA River. Also, we have about $400,000 that we set aside in that same measure, our regional funds, that can be used for the, a culvert, covering a culvert that will be tied into the Riverwalk project that is currently underway. So it will extend it to the new roadway that we built along, part of the Flower Street Bridge that was constructed last year.
And again, these are funds that cannot be used for any other purpose. They're dedicated for bikeway improvements.
Exactly, yes, Mr. Senior Manager. So these, we're going forward with the level of funding that we have. Our next attempt will be to take also $400,000, $100,000, which is in 1213, another $300,000 in, I'm sorry, $100,000 this year, and $300,000 next year. These are, again, measure our regional funds that we've allocated through the metro process, regional, our measure, measure our funds, that we will be spending on installing, striping, signage, shareos that were outlined in the plan immediately in the next year, so we can get it out all at once, put in as many bicycle facilities as we can that is possible. And in the next last slide, essentially, I'm not going to go through the details, but this is the funding that we've had in the past, in the last couple of years, where we've allocated for bicycle planning, where there's a bicycle plan, where there's installation of $200,000 of bicycle racks, as you may have seen already throughout the city that has been installed, and there's also some education on bicycle rocker funding, locker funding that has been set aside and that has been installed. With that, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, that completes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Myself and Ryan Snyder and staff is present. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we go to the public? Okay, I have a number of cards. I want to thank all of the speakers for taking the time to come in today. I also want to thank Mr. Fuad for coming in and, and giving us your perspectives from the Transportation Commission, and also for your and your fellow commissioners' work. Thank you very much. My first card is Mike Mohill, to be followed by Alec Bartou.
Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman, council members in the viewing audience. Grant money from the state, federal, county, city, it's all tax money, and how we spend it. Who are the people who ride the bicycles? Is it mainly for recreational purposes, or to go to work, or to go to school? I look in, I look throughout my city, and most of the people ride the bicycle for recreational purposes. Is this where my taxpayers, taxpayers' money should be spent? You cut off money for public transportation. People who ride the buses don't ride it for recreational, they ride it to go to school or to go to work. Yet, we're going to find money for people that bicycle as a hobby. We also need money for the infrastructure of our roads. Again, it's taxpayers' money, either here or there. How many people actually ride the bike for, for the main purpose of transportation, not for recreation? Removing parking lanes slows down traffic and causes more accidents. If the program is a failure, who pays for the restriping and pull-up all the bike signs, et cetera? In the city of Vancouver, I was several months ago, they had bike lanes there, and the people were screaming and yelling, causing road rage. The mayor there may be losing his job next year, I understand. Sorry, nothing you personally, I'm sorry. We are the third-largest city in the county in population. Why do we need this? And you talk about reverse angle parking. Wow. I can just see my wife parking backwards. How many people can't drive forward, let alone backward, reverse? That's another accident waiting to happen. And you know, the people who ride the bicycles, are they paying any licenses? I pay a license to drive my car. Aren't they supposed to be paying a license for ride the bicycle? I thought, I understand they just haven't enforced it. There are a lot of issues here, but the people who, who are mainly paying the bills for roads are the tax- are the taxpayers who have cars and motorcycles, not the bicycle riders. There are special interests who've got to the politicians and say, this is what we want. Well, the people who don't ride bicycles, we want our money to be spent on transportation. We don't want fewer roads. We don't want, we don't want diets. We want to be able to park full. We want more fast speedways. Don't slow down our traffic. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. Alec Bartosu, followed by Ryan Johnson.
Hello, my name is Alec Bartosu. I'm with the Coalition for Green Glendale. I'm just here to strongly support the Bike Master Plan. I think it's a great policy document and I think we have a great opportunity here in Glendale to do something with this document, and that is to increase infrastructure for bicycles and the people who use them. I did not use my bike to get here. I walked here today, but I did use it earlier today to get to the garden. I used it yesterday to go to the grocery store and I think there's great opportunity for many other residents to use bicycles. And in today's day and age, with gas prices so high and with cars creating so many problems, with traffic accidents, with the reputation that Glendale has, this is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you pay taxes? Do you pay federal and state?
I pay lots of taxes and I'm happy to pay for taxes and I hope that-
Also, you have a car?
I share a car, yes.
You share a car, so you and the other co-driver also pay taxes?
Yes.
DMV fees, et cetera?
We pay our fair share.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Ryan Johnson, followed by Bill Weissman.
Good afternoon, Ryan Johnson. I'm actually a resident of Eagle Rock, but I consider myself a suburban resident of Glendale. I do not own an automobile. I do have a bike and I, besides the Target nearby, everything I do, I have to come to Glendale for, run errands, go to grocery. And I don't, it's not really a form of recreation, riding next to 60 mile-per-hour vehicles. That's not very much fun to me. So I only use my bike for errands and a couple of times, I've actually gone to the classes at UCLA. That's the point I want to bring up, that I think all of us understand that we're not residents of isolated cities and we're kind of, we're residents of this greater region. And this bike plan will fit in nicely to the regional plans that are going forth. Los Angeles finally passed theirs a couple of years ago. Long Beach and Santa Monica are smaller cities like Glendale that are setting examples. And I think Glendale has a great opportunity to help complete this network, connect Los Angeles, the Eagle Rock area, to Burbank, which is going forward with plans themselves in the San Fernando Valley. Yeah, and I also pay taxes and I would gladly pay more if they were to provide transportation for folks like me, people who don't have a strong voice and can't come to the city and ask for dedicated bike facilities. They also deserve proper facilities and safety. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Weissman, followed by Ari Gross.
Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman, council members, city staff and the public. My name is Bill Weissman from far north Glendale and I'm speaking as a private individual. I wanted to start first by thanking the city staff, the Bicycle Advisory Committee and Ryan Snyder and Associates for the hard work that they've done on this plan. It's been a while coming together and I think the amount of outreach that was done and the amount of work that was done on this has resulted in a good plan for this city. The members of the Transportation and Parking Commission did have a number of comments, which are summarized in your packet, so I'm not going to repeat any of those, but that might be something you might want to look at when you're considering this. Wanted to also talk a little bit about how funding for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure can help revitalize cities, especially in an economic sense. And we've seen that with the Second Street in Long Beach, bicycle and pedestrian improvements that have been done, the bike corrals and the other, the street furniture that they use. If you go down there, and I would encourage you to do that if you're ever in the Long Beach area, the economy of that area is just bustling. If you're down there at lunchtime, all of the restaurants are full, the shops have lots of people going in and out. And I think it's important to keep in mind that the amount of money out of our transportation budget that is spent on bicycle and pedestrian improvements versus automobiles is absolutely miniscule. And yet, as an investment, it can bring important returns in terms of economic revitalization of certain areas. So I support this plan and urge your support as well, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ari Gross, to be followed by Rick Barnes.
Hello, my name is Ari Gross, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff and the public. I'm here to speak in favor of the Bicycle Master Plan. I'm a resident of Glendale, live in the Verdugo Woodlands area, on Verdugo Road, just north of Glendale Community College and Verdugo Woodlands Elementary School. One of the best elementary schools in the region and less than a third of a mile south of it is Glendale Community College. And on my way over here today, as traffic was backed up for about half a mile from the elementary school with cars coming to pick up children and a stream of cars with largely, it may be prejudicial, prejudicial, but young drivers coming out of the college, twice, there were near accidents right, right at the crosswalk where the elementary school is. And I think this Bicycle Master Plan is so important in creating a calming effect on traffic in the area. It's a heavily-traveled road. It's not usually that it's congested, it's that people drive too fast. And while a road diet may not be the appropriate measure there, I'd like to try it there, whatever traffic calming measures can be applied in that area where there are so many small children and so many college students, I think will vastly improve the quality of life over there in Glendale, help property values. The house next door to mine has been on the market for several months and about a week ago, there was a prospective buyer there and I happened to be in front of the house because it was trash day and this gentleman said to me, is it always this bad here? Referring to the traffic. I'm not a huge cyclist, but I think there's tremendous benefit to this Bicycle Master Plan for everybody in Glendale. And I think the cost is miniscule compared to the cost of another kid getting hit in a crosswalk, the accidents that frequently happen on my street. And just wanted to commend this body for moving forward with it and I want to thank everyone who's been involved in the development of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Barnes, then my last card is Natalia Winarski.
Mayor, good afternoon, City Council, staff. I think the staff did a great job on doing this also. I do have a couple of questions though. Number one, to my mind, is that with the shortages of funds, how do we implement this now and why do we implement it when there's other priorities? Two, when you're in Long Beach, there's a destination location of Long Beach and there's a great deal of destination things there. We have forest lawn here. I don't see a lot of bicyclists up there at the moment. The other part I see is that when you have bicyclists, and I've noticed this, as a matter of fact, this last weekend, there was a group of bicyclists and you're at a four-way stop sign and they chose to go straight through it and made everybody else as if they have the right of way over the stop sign. Coming here, a bicyclist, the light was red, was in the middle of the intersection ready to make a left turn and the light turned red and the bicyclist going on the wrong side of the street, going right up against the red light. If I hadn't caught him, I would have hit him. So my mindset is, you have all this money going out, but we have nothing on training of people that are riding on the bikes right now. Burbank has closed lanes over there on Verdugo Road or Verdugo and the clients that I have in Burbank are really, really upset because they didn't think they had enough information. And I believe that they went out to the city, but people who really are impacted, which are other drivers and other residents, have not seen this enough. They don't really believe that you'll do a plan like this. And I think you need to publish this plan, let it be out, so that they can see that you're taking away major arteries in a very, very tight, congested city. I think we're the second congested city in the state of California next to San Francisco. So when I'm looking at this, what I see is a great deal of congestion, but again, road rage where bicyclists are going to be taking their right of way and drivers are going to be getting more and more upset. So I think there's a real question as to getting more information out to the non-bicycling public. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Winarski is my last card.
Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman and City Council. My name is Natalie Winarski and I'm a resident here of Glendale. And I have been involved with the Bicycle Master Plan and I'm actually with Walk By Glendale. And I'm here to say please, just thank you for all the hard work that everyone has been doing and to continue the efforts and that to please adopt the plan when you will be voting on it. And that also there are efforts being put forward with Walk By Glendale. People have been becoming league-certified instructors from the League of American Bicyclists and to be able to go, come out to the community, to educate the community on safe bicycling, handling skills. So thank you for your time and thank you for everyone.
Thank you. That's my last card. I will go to comments from the council.
Okay, I'll go first. I'm glad we cleared up the tax issues pertaining to this plan. I just don't think bicyclists drop in out of the clouds and have no contact with local governmental society. But anyway, well, let me say that cities across the region are headed in this direction. So it's not just Glendale, it's not just the city of LA. I sit on the Southern California Association of Governments, it's called SCAG, and we just finished working on our regional transportation plan, the RTP, a document that's basic, a planning document that's basically good for four years. And bicycle plans and safe ways to school and all the rest of the issues that we're dealing with this afternoon are in that RTP. And what I discovered, this SCAG, by the way, consists of government representatives from San Bernardino County, Riverside County, Imperial County, Los Angeles County, Orange County and Ventura County. Supervisors and individual cities and broken up into districts. Well, what I discovered was that, hey, guess what? It's not just along the coast, but in fact, cities all over the region have bicycle plans that they're actively pursuing and have been quite successful, from Riverside to Orange County cities. So it's more than just sort of a coastal situation like Santa Monica or Long Beach. And for me, the worth of what we're doing, and it's just the preliminaries, we have such a long way to go before we have a comprehensive master bicycle plan that would cover this region. But what I'm particularly interested in, and it has been proven that it works, is linking bicycle lanes and bicycle plan to public transportation. It's that last mile, that last mile and a half, maybe two miles, that quite often will keep people from using bicycles, whether it's at work or at home. And as the push continues for bike lanes and bike plans in general, you'll see more and more people riding their bike to either our transportation center or to a, to a bus stop somewhere, loading their bike and off they go. I also find it interesting that Vancouver would seem to get some bad press, according to one of the speakers. Vancouver next year, this coming year, 2012, is going to be the host to the VeloCities, an international conference that, that works on bikes and transportation, public transportation. The last, the last conference was in Europe. The conference this year is in North America. So it's kind of interesting, I find, that a city like Vancouver with all of the rain and so forth, they've made the effort. A city like Chicago with the very heavy weather that they have in the winter, they've made the effort and been very successful. So I think we can make the effort here in Southern California. I think we're enjoying success, we're going to enjoy even more success. Yeah, there's going to be some rough spots from time to time, but people will get used to it and I do think we're headed in the right direction. And what I found interesting was that in the city of Seville, the largest city in Southern Spain, that had no history of bicycle usage really, very little, unlike cities like Amsterdam and other cities, the city of Seville went from 500 bicycle trips a day to 5,000. The business people that at first were opposed to these bicycle lanes running in front of their businesses eventually were not only persuaded, but streets on the other side of a bicycle lane wanted to have bike lanes put in. So it worked out very well for the retail, restaurant and other businesses along these routes. So I'm very happy to support this. I think we've done a great job, staff's done a great job in the consulting and I'm looking forward to working it out. We're not going to do it overnight, but we're certainly headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
I know there was a lot of hard work put in on this report. I was a member of the Transportation and Parking Commission, the last time it was reviewed, which was probably 1997 or '96 or something like that. Steve Zurn was an assistant, Public Works, something or other. So I, I think it's a great planning document. I just have a couple of comments. The reverse angle parking on Brand, no way. I'm never going to support that. I think that's just a recipe for disaster. I don't see how it eliminates the backing movement because I understand the danger is a bike coming down currently is at risk when a car backs out of a spot. I just think it creates all sorts of problems, confusing drivers, misjudging their backing movements. It's a completely, I think it's a completely new movement of the vehicle that doesn't exist in any other, in any other situation currently. So I'm very cautious about anything that goes in that direction. Road diets, again, we, we haven't yet installed our road diet test case and I'm getting all sorts of angry letters from the folks in Whiting Woods and folks that shop at Trader Joe's and that use Honolulu. And it isn't even in yet. So I think we really have to be very careful where we put our road diets. Let's be very observant and sensitive to the issues that arise on Honolulu. If it turns out to be a success, great, but let's just not get too far ahead of ourselves. I'm much more supportive of the Class 3 bikeway and the Class 2 that has striping but does not take away any traffic lanes. I mean, if we had done our, Mr. Gross talks about Verdugo Road, I'm very familiar with that. Imagine at that school, at pickup time, if there was only one, and currently the cars queue up northbound, maybe quarter mile to a half mile. Imagine, and the traffic that has to pass southbound is able to because we have that other through lane. Imagine what would happen if there was only one through lane and we did have a road diet and that there's bikes trying to get through on the right side. I think we'd really be looking at some problems. I guess the point is, the road diet sounds great, but there's a, as I said before in our earlier discussion of the road diets, let's just be very careful and make sure that we do all our homework and all our outreach before we install them. The comments on connecting and linking to public transportation, I think are well-taken at the MTA and at MetroLink, we're very- we're very cognizant of that. We actually have bike cars reserved only for the bicycles on the MetroLink, as well as we're looking into adding extra bike racks on our MTA buses so folks can take that public transportation, bring their bike with them, and get that last mile to their to their appropriate spots. The point about the, you know, do they pay taxes? I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't laugh about that because the National Highway Trust Fund is going to go broke. And it's the the fees on gasoline that pay that. In fact, you know, the big issue now is are the electric cars and all the the mere fact that many of our cars that use these roadways, as will our bicycles, get such better gas mileage than previously, that it is draining that trust fund. And it is going to be a crisis soon because so much of our funding does come from the federal government. Much of it, in our bikeway budget, comes from Measure R, which is a sales tax, and that's fine. But a lot of our funding does come from the federal government. And we have to really keep an eye on the funding dollars. Clearly, if we had an unlimited pot, there's great things we can do. The challenge that our transportation staff and the community has is, how do we make it work? How do we get our best value with the the limited funds that we have? So in general, though, I do support the hard work and the the staff time that was put into this. And it's a document that we can use now to go forward.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Well, as I've said before, I did not support this. I do not support it now, and I probably never will support it. The city's over 100 years old. When it was founded, there were undoubtedly people riding bicycles in this city. And up until today, they're still riding bicycles. And bicyclists go wherever they want to go, alleys, sidewalks, streets, you name it. If they want to go there, they go. We live in a city that is tremendously unsafe for drivers and a car. You talk about safety to bicyclists, and you're going to protect them? They're coming from behind you at 40, 50 miles an hour? That's just one point. I'll save most of my comments for later. But it's folly to even go there. Even Mr. Njorion talks about the school up in My Canyon, where we're going to find out how many people want it or not, Glen Oaks, where we have, let's see, we have three parks, we have a golf course, we have tennis courts, and now you want to add bicycle lanes in there where some cars speed 40, 50 miles an hour. And at the schools, Glen Oaks Elementary, in the morning, it's three streets backed up both ways. And you're going to put bicycle lanes in there, too. I have to sometimes wait 10 minutes to get down there because there's no room in the middle because we put white lines on the side and a double line in the middle. I'll let it go at that. When it comes back, I'll have a whole list of my reasons why I think we don't do this, including lack of money. And if we have the money, we ought to be doing streets. We don't have enough money for that either because we're going to cut $10 or $1 million more out of the budget the coming year. So if you want to put this in a bookcase somewhere until the city and the state and the country are out of debt, and we have a recovery with money to spend like on anything, fine. This is not high priority in my book. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think that this is an important first step. It lays the groundwork for what I hope will come in future years. It's important, as somebody mentioned, for economic development. I would ask any of you that doubt this to go to Long Beach and speak to the merchants along the roads that have put in the green-colored sharrows, that have put in the other bike lanes, because I've been there and I've spoken to them. And there were many of those merchants who were against the bike amenities, who didn't want bike racks, who didn't want parking taken away. And now they're lining up and asking, please, put a bike corral in front of my cafe or my bookstore or my restaurant. Bring the bikes back, bring the bikes in, because they know that those people are traveling more slowly. They stop, they see what's around them, they notice the stores, they notice the storefronts. It's important because it makes our city more livable. It makes it healthier for the public, not only in terms of the traffic safety and the people who are on bicycles, but in terms of physical activity in our community. And you can track, for instance, the rise of childhood obesity directly to when children stopped walking and riding bicycles to school. It's an incredible statistical curve that follows exactly along those lines. It's basically important for our quality of life in the city. And somebody mentioned congestion. I really doubt that we're the second most congested city in California. I have never heard that. I'd be very interested in in seeing where that statistic came from because I've traveled around California, and there's a lot of places that are a lot more congested than here. But if we are, you should want this. Because the goal is to get people out of their cars and into alternative forms of transportation like bicycles and buses. The more you make it safe and and easy for people to bicycle, the more they will get out of their cars. And we know that because we've asked people, we've asked them right here in Glendale, and many, many people have responded that they would love to bicycle around the city, but they don't because they're afraid. And to me, this is about giving people choices. It's not about forcing people out of their cars. This isn't going to force anyone out of their car. But it gives people the option of taking other modes of transportation. And right now, as gas prices are soaring, it really is tempting to ride your bike a couple miles or half a mile. Most trips we know are within two miles of the home, but just to ride your bike to the grocery store, to ride your bike when you're going somewhere. I ride my bike to City Hall quite a bit. The only difficult part's going home because it's uphill. But I would love it to be safer. I'd love it to be easier. And I think that more people would would get out and get onto bicycles if it was safer and easier. And there are people in this community that ride bicycles, certainly for recreation, and there are people that ride bicycles because they don't have a choice, because the car, the insurance, the car, the gasoline has become too expensive. And we owe it to those people to give them a safe way to get to their destination. So I think that there are many, many reasons to do this and and very few reasons not to. We absolutely will look at things like road diets very carefully, one by one, as the plan says, that these are areas to be studied. And if there are problems, they can be reversed. I don't think anyone's going to stand for doing something that's going to really tie up traffic. But from what I've seen of road diets in other cities, many of them have been very successful, and they haven't caused increased congestion, quite the opposite. They've made traffic, they've allowed traffic to move just as smoothly. And I hear a lot more from people who say that cars go too fast in the city than that cars are doing, going too slow. I get those emails from people on a weekly, if not a daily basis. And there are places in the city where people are driving above the speed limit and they're driving too quickly. And some of this type of engineering that's geared towards bicycles can help slow those roads down, too. If you ask those people in Long Beach and the residential neighborhoods how they feel about being in in streets that have dedicated bike lanes or that have traffic circles instead of stop signs, they'll tell you that they may have been skeptical at first, but they're very much for them now. And more and more neighborhoods there, and these are neighborhoods that are very similar to our residential neighborhoods, are asking, please, replace my four-way stop sign with a traffic circle instead because it's so much easier to get around. I don't have to stop or slow down. Please, put that bike lane in because I've got kids and the traffic's going too fast, and I think this might slow it down. Or my kids want to ride a bike, and this would make it safer for them. So I I think that there's a whole lot of reasons to do this, and I think it's very, very important. And I'm very happy that hopefully this will be adopted in a few minutes. It'll be adopted while I'm still mayor in this city. In terms of payment and taxes, absolutely that's an issue. But I don't think that necessarily the people who are using the service have to pay for it 100%. I think it affects so many other things in terms of our quality of life and public health. And there are lots of taxes that are collected on things like alcohol and tobacco that go to pay for things that are not for the use of people who are just using alcohol and tobacco. They go for a whole host of social programs. And I agree that money needs to be found. And hopefully, the federal government and the state government will start to make these types of improvements a priority and find the funding for them. And hopefully, in this city, will recognize this as a priority and prioritize it along with other things that are important and reasonable to spend money on, in terms of our capital improvement program, in terms of our transportation program and all of that. So, yeah, the money's going to be hard to find. And if I, if we had the money, I would love to see this all start right away. The unfortunate part is that it's going to take a number of years to really institute this because of the funding, because we do have a lot of priorities. But to me, whether or not people just own a bike and don't own a car, I think that's all a red herring and completely irrelevant. So those are the comments that I have at this time. I want to thank the public for coming out. I know a lot of you participated in the creation of this plan and the task forces. And I know a lot of you, that we've had a lot of meetings, and a lot of you have gone to a lot of those meetings. And I want to thank you for your participation because I think it's already really bearing fruit in the city. And we can see that by looking down at the pavement. And we can see that by the increased number of people that we are recording in our bicycle counts. So thank you all. What kind of direction are you looking for, Mr. City Attorney?
Not him.
Mr. Zurn, you're back.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just here to to sum it up. And Mr. Garcia, I think, is going to go over the revised motion we have.
Correct. Madam Mayor, members of council, the motion is to provide direction to to staff to continue with the plan, take public comment, conduct environmental review, and proceed in accordance with the comments provided by council at today's meeting. That's essentially what the motion would be.
And with that, we're prepared to clean up the document, move forward, get it through the environmental review, and return to you in May for a formal action.
Okay.
So moved.
Question. What kind of environmental review is performed on a project, on a plan that may have so many different components? I mean, from...
Yeah. Councilman Jerran, what will happen is it'll be more of a plan-level review of the document as opposed to looking at specific projects. I'm not sure what type of environmental document will be required, but it'll be more of a plan-level review. What are the, what are the more global impacts of the of the plan, if any, as opposed to a project-specific review of the impacts?
And then, Madam Mayor, if I may, as we, because one of the things I don't think we emphasize and mention is each each aspect of this plan will be brought back to you, even after the adoption of the plan, will be brought back to you individually. The likelihood is it will be incorporated into some larger infrastructure project. So that will be brought back to you with details, and each of those will have to go through its separate environmental review as well as its the vetting through this body.
Okay.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha, Njorion.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item two on this special public meeting of the Glendale City Council agenda is Director of Community Development regarding ordinance amending Chapter 2.30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the addition of an economic development program. Two ways of ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. Mr. Hagani.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, the absence of and the elimination of the redevelopment program by the state, we're now, our job of still attracting investment and expanding the businesses that have already invested in the city and finding new ways of keeping ourselves on the leading edge of attracting investment into Glendale is not ending. Therefore, we're looking at several options, and two of which will be presented to you today, starting with this one this afternoon. And later tonight, you have another item that you will be reviewing. This one in particular, basically, we're asking you to adopt an ordinance that allows us to come up with some sort of an organization to continue economic development programs that previously were largely done by the redevelopment agency. However, this is not finding ways to recapture some of those. It's a brand-new way of thinking and based on economic development programs. You might know that since the merging of several divisions and departments into the community development department, that department has been reprogramming its its goals to be all about economic development. But the new city manager, Scott Ochoa, is taking that across the city organization. Economic development is becoming more and more important. Basically, this ordinance establishes the legal framework based on which we'll then come back to you in the future with a new structure, a new format, a new way of doing business to attract development and investment into Glendale. We urge you to adopt this ordinance. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Chikantaro.
Question. I think it's a good idea. And I think Mr. Hagani and Mr. Ochoa are going to put it in motion. And once again, I think we're headed in the right direction with this concept. I'll make a motion if...
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Mr. Weaver, did you have any comments?
No, go for it.
The ordinance has been introduced. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have cards. Thank you. Let me go to the public before we formally introduce the motion for the ordinance. Mike Mohill to be followed by Aram Kazazian. Mike Mohill, are you here? Okay, Aram Kazazian to be followed by Herbert Milano.
Yes, my name is Aram Kazazian. I have, last week I was here, I had some concerns about some of the projects on redevelopment agency. And so what I can understand of this is that you're going to, instead of economic development program, you should really call it new redevelopment agency of Glendale because it sounds about the same thing to me. Now, before we adapt this, I urge you, please, to contact the different organizations in Glendale to see if any objections come up. So far, there is no advertising. There's no, nothing in the newspaper said you're going to put a new redevelopment agency. I want to know if you contacted Glendale Homer's Coordinating Council, the Chamber of Commerce was contacted, the Board of Realtors was contacted, Glendale News Press was contacted, the advertiser in the Glendale News Press, what are you doing before you, and, you know, we are already 1.1 billion, billion, 1.1 billion dollars in negative in the redevelopment agency. How much more is this going to cost the city? And I, you know, I asked the question last week. I didn't get an answer. And I'd like to get some answers on that. And how much this is going to cost? It's kind of really disturbing that we're doing something like this without the general public really awareness. It was kind of hidden right under the bicycle plan, which nobody even knows about. If they didn't read it, they would not even understand it, what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Milano to be followed by Richard Espiritu.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. Conceptually, I support the idea of an economic development agency of some sort. Hopefully, not the same or in the same light as the redevelopment agency with regard to the purchases of properties, the significant amount of subsidies, that kind of thing. Because I believe that, for example, Brand Boulevard is now beginning to have the kind of traction of more people showing up to attend, to go to restaurants and events. For a very long time, I've been coming to the redevelopment agency and mentioning the opportunities that we have in truly creating Brand Boulevard as dynamic as what we find in Pasadena. I still find myself going to Pasadena a lot more often, into Burbank, simply because Brand Boulevard on Friday nights and Saturdays is still pretty much quiet or dead economically. But we began to see a lot of synergy there. And I think this is probably where some good ideas and perhaps some investment to try to bring this part of Glendale into a truly active nightlife that I think is needed. So I think the objectives are a good one. I think that there's a lot of opportunity, a significant amount, to really coalesce all of the building owners and entrepreneurs within the city to make Brand Boulevard as dynamic as it is in Pasadena. It takes a lot of coordination. I wanted to also mention the fact, for example, that in Burbank, there's free Wi-Fi throughout downtown, the downtown area. I figured, right, that's a little bit of investment that could go a long ways in basically making the whole area a lot more attractive to people who want to come in, dine, or shop, and have their Wi-Fi available for them. So in concept, I support the idea of having a community development department. I do not support the idea of major subsidies to hotels or subsidies to many other individuals who are basically playing one city against the other as they did for decades. But I think that overall, if the concepts are to revitalize the downtown, create a more dynamic economic area, bring in and coalesce the whole area into a really coordinated effort, I support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard Espiritu. And my last card will be Rick Barnes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espiritu. I've had a lot of problems with this economic development program. One of them is on item, item B. It says loans and tax rebates. Why do we want to give somebody a tax rebate? The other one is, why do we want to purchase property and sell it less than fair market value? It's item E. The other one is on number H and I, you're talking about generating bonds. I have a question, I have a real problem with generating bonds. We got a lot of money that we have to pay back on bonds. Why do we want to... that we have to pay back on bonds. Why do we want to increase our debt later on down the road? Under the authorization activity, it also talks about issuing bonds, but on item O, you also talk about a local economic development agency. Who's going to be on that local economic development agency, and who is going to be on the economic development agency also? You're talking about establishing two agencies. Who's going to sit on them? I think it would be interesting to know who is going to be on those agencies, since this is supposed to replace some other agencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rick Barnes is my last card.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, staff. Rick Barnes. I was happy to see this because I think we do need the economic development, and I think there's a lot of work to be done. I'm just hoping that, again, before you go too far into it, that you involve the Realtors, and we are, we've got a lot of really great commercial real estate brokers in the community. I know that some at the last meeting of City Council said that they weren't involved or didn't hear about it, and unfortunately, I do believe that's part of our problem with the city, is that when we're trying to contact people, I put my name down for email information, and not once of any of the things I've asked for have I ever gotten an email to let us know that there's a meeting coming up with the city or with the staff, with the planning staff, zoning staff, Department of Traffic and Engineering. And I believe that's important if you guys are going to ask us to be here, that at least we get recommunicated, one. Two, I believe it's really important to involve some of the real estate community. We have local government relations. We have commercial. We have a lot of different things going on that we actually have input with the other community that is not just the bicyclists, or not just these people, but their mom and pops that we're talking to every day. And the Chamber of Commerce also should be involved in trying to put this together. And I notice, I'm not sure if it's this one today or the one for tonight, is the drop in ownership, property owners from 50% down to 30%. I still think ownership gives a different perspective on a property. And there's a lot of things we do right, and a lot of things we do wrong, but having the ownership drop in it like that, I think, does not help our community and on this economic development. So again, that's a couple of things I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. That's my last card. Ms. Turner-Najarian?
What is this? How come I, I mean, this has dropped on me like a ton of bricks. It's creating, are we creating a new department? Are we creating a new agency?
At this moment, we're only creating the legal framework to then, based on that, propose to you a whole new structure and format of developing an economic development program. As you know, we have been developing an economic development strategic plan. You have established several economic development goals, and you have given us a lot of direction in terms of economic development. Over the last year, we have been looking at the deficiencies in the economic development program, and we have come up with so many different ways of addressing those and having our economic development program be even more robust and aggressive than it has been in the past. However, since all of the past practice was based on the redevelopment agency's limitations and structures, we were, with the absence of redevelopment, not only do we not have those resources, we actually now have a new opportunity to expand beyond redevelopment and look at the city charter as the authority that we have and to come up with something that's much more custom-designed for Glendale. So this is simply putting the foundation. We will be coming to you with a lot of different new information. We will be doing a lot of outreach. None of this will be done without discussion with the business organizations. We are, in fact, approaching this similar to what we have done in approaching the neighborhoods in the city. The same way, we have neighborhood presence and outreach to neighborhoods. We're going to have the same type of outreach to the businesses and the commercial areas to make sure that everybody is engaged and involved, and we will come up with it. And we're not coming up with a disguised version of the redevelopment agency. We're, in fact, going to look at a brand-new way that focuses on economic development.
It's an interesting dynamic that if you go through the Glendale Municipal Code, there's no mention of economic development anywhere. There's no legal authority for us because everything we've done heretofore has been under the auspices of the community redevelopment laws and state statute. Now that that does not exist any longer, we need to have some framework with which to approach economic development, as that has been a council priority. So all this does at this point is insert into the Glendale Municipal Code that economic development is a program within the overall function of the city and that the economic development program may consist of these listed items. The creation of a local economic development agency would be something that could occur down the line if that's what council chooses to do.
And just to be clear, any program would have to come back to us for discussion. This is not an adoption of any particular program. This is just setting up the mechanism by which the city has the ability to do something like community branding, any of the programs that we've done in the past.
The rights and powers of economic development being vested within the municipal code.
That sounds great. Are you telling me right now that the City Council cannot ensure, rent, manage, operate, or repair property owned by the city? Come on, guys. I mean, if we can't do that, we've had problems way before. So my point is, I need to see what this is. Before you engage the community, why don't you engage the council or this council member? Maybe I missed the memo on this, but I need to understand what this is before we lay the framework and assist the foundation for a building that we may build. I want to make sure I want to build that building. So I really think this came up too quickly, especially in this last few weeks where we've had a lot on our table, on the table, serious issues that have distracted me personally, to focus on them. So is there a rush that this has to go through?
Yes, that's a criticism that's well taken. I actually made a request of the city manager to do this now rather than later because we are getting, as we're going through a lot of our discussions with the state and the Oversight Committee, et cetera, regarding the different mechanisms we're going to employ in continuing some of the important businesses that the city did, I felt a need to bring this to you now rather than a few weeks later even because we do not want to put ourselves in a situation where somebody will accuse us of doing this as a reaction to the removal of redevelopment. This is an authority we could have always established for ourselves. We never did. However, this is a good time for us to establish the framework so that we can work from. And we will, believe me, we will not do anything without first checking with the council. If there is one lesson we have learned, and that's that we will either contact you individually and brief you and get your feedback, or come to a meeting with you before we go out to the community. On one hand, the community wants us to go to them first, but we also know that we need to come to you first. We will do both.
Thank you. And I don't mean to criticize Mr. Ochoa so severely, but I'm not really criticizing, actually. I just, the point is, I need to think about this and to get, as I say, wrap my head around it. I have some questions for legal. I have some questions on the financial end, on the staffing end, the formation end of it, all these things that I just feel very unprepared to, although we're not voting on it today. It's only for introduction. I feel very unprepared to appreciate the depth and the gravity of what we're doing. So when we do vote on it, I really want to understand what the ramifications could be.
We would be happy to have conversations with council individually between now and the time you vote. And if you'd like, you could put the voting on it in two weeks because next week, I understand, we don't have full council, so we could have it in two weeks.
To my colleagues, but you've introduced the ordinance, so...
I also need to be brought up to speed.
So next week, if they feel that they need more time, they can continue to adjourn.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Next item?
Next item, there's no, that was the last item on the special meeting agenda, but we do have a successor agency meeting after this end.
Correct. Can we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved. Second?
Okay, the special meeting is adjourned.